Good evening. Please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School Town of Speedway for April 11th, 2023. We're working from a 12-item agenda, and the first item is to approve the minutes of the March 14th meeting.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the March 14th, 2023 meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes? Opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Food Services Management Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is to approve the Food Service Management Agreement with Airmark. Airmark has been a great partner with the School Town of Speedway Corporation for many years. Our cafeteria workers, Airmark Food and Nutrition Director Elizabeth Schmidt and cafeteria supervisor Ryan Hahn continues to exceed all expectations. The adjusted fees are small and present over the life of the contract, and the complete FSMA proposal is enclosed. So the recommendation is to approve Airmark for the next contract.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Food Services Management Agreement.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is this a renewable?
This is. After the first year, there could be three amendments, so it's a total of five years. Possibility. So it's 2018 is when we did this last time for a proposal.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other items? All those in favor of approving the Food Services Management Agreement, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number two is the latchkey agreement.
Enclosed in your packet is a draft copy of a proposal agreement to allow at your school, which we commonly know as AYS, to continue to provide latchkey services for our students for the next five years. We received four requests for proposals for latchkey services. After reviewing each proposal and rating each submitted proposal in a rubric, AYS was a vendor that best met our needs. Speedway Schools is required by law to offer latchkey services, and AYS has been our vendor since this requirement began in 1990, in the 1990s. We've had a very good relationship with AYS and are fortunate that they continue to be willing to provide these services. The reality is that we don't meet the minimum requirement to have a before and after-school care site at each elementary building. AYS has worked with us to allow us to be creative and operate in two sites currently, Wheeler and Newby. Students in the latchkey program can start as early as 7:00 a.m. and they go to 6:00 p.m. And AYS has proven to be a safe and affordable service for our families for over 25 years. The recommendation would be to approve AYS as a latchkey program for Speedway Schools.
It's the board's pleasure.
I'll move that we approve AYS as a latchkey partner.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
How do kids that are at the other two elementary schools take part in this program?
Great question. So we have a... In the morning, the parents would drop them off at the school. We have a bus that we pay for to take our students from those schools in the morning to their home elementary school in the afternoon. The opposite thing happens, and that is when school ends, there's a bus that will take them from there to the latchkey site. Parents pick them up from those latchkey sites. So we provide a... We pay for a bus to pick them up and drop them off. And if it ever gets to the point where we have enough interest... We have had three sites before. One of those... Allison was a site at one time. So it's a minimum of 21 in the morning and 50 in the afternoon that's needed to operate a site, so.
Mr. Disney, are there any AYS employees who are also full or part-time employees of the school system as well?
There currently is not. There has been.
Okay.
Actually, we've... Don't tell them, but we've taken a couple of their employees as pairs because they were so good. They were... And they started working for us. And... But that currently doesn't take place.
Are there any other questions from the group? All those in favor of approving the latchkey agreement with AYS, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you. The next item is to get an update on building projects.
Thank you, Mr. President. In 19... No. Wow. In 2017, not 1900s. In 2017, we started adding security doors at all the elementaries that automatically shuts. We moved to increase and improve lighting for safety reasons. Recently, we improved the high school front entry level. And as the former high school principal, once people walk in both sets of doors by the car where it sits, they could go anywhere in the building. So now all visitors during the school hours have to go through the office before they can go anywhere in the building. And finally, we're taking care of the junior high and Fisher Elementary. And we've stayed this a few times, and it'll start on May 26. That's carb day. I gave them the keys to the building on that day. I don't know if we'll be here, but they're going to be in... I'm going to... We're going to go in and start that project and hopefully be done by July 7th because that's moratorium week. And what they're going to do is the same thing as the high schools. We're going to move all visitors will have to check into the main office before they can walk into the rest of the building. And unfortunately, with the events that have happened through the nation the last few months, it's... I want to make sure we do everything we can to keep our kids safe and that visitors are checking in. It's one piece. I understand that. But it's a good piece to start right there. So we're doing the same thing. We'll revamp the junior high and Fisher Elementary office. We had a $25,000 grant we were awarded from the state of Indiana. So we're using that on top of the project you approved last month. This is kind of a repeat. This isn't a new thing. I'm just telling you where we're at now. $149,000 plus a $25,000 match. We're getting this thing pretty... At a pretty good price for right now. So I'm happy. The project's going to move forward. We're going to ensure that... Well, I'm going to ensure that it's done, ready for school. Yes, I'll cross my fingers on that one with construction right now, but I feel pretty promised. I feel... I feel pretty good, and I think we have pretty good promises from our contractors. We're going to get the job done. We haven't missed a deadline yet, so we'll continue that. The high school tower, just to give you an upset, that's on top of the high school, our brand-new building, 1963. The air conditioning there, just to let people know. We had a warm day last Monday, Sunday, Monday, if you remember, last week. That's something that you can't just turn the thermostat up and down on. I know that's frustrating for the students and the staff, but it takes a few days to get us where we need to go. So Indiana weather, it takes us a day or so to get the water chilled down where we need to go. But on top, the median is going to be replaced, and we think we can revise it and repaint it and re-code it and make that look nicer and more efficient. And we believe that can last another 10 years. And that's one piece on top of the AC unit that's down in our boiler room. So that's a pretty big piece there, the tower on top. Once we get that fixed, I feel like we can go another decade with our AC unit. But knock on wood on that. Never say no. It's 1963, so you never know. We have a lot of duct tape, though. It's working. Finally, I'd like to... There are two other things. Going around the community talking, I've heard a lot of questions and whatnot, and I want to talk about two other things. Jordan Auditorium. We are now in a place where we bought... Where the play Wizard of Oz was a few weeks ago. We bought brand-new cordless mics. And just to let you know, that was an investment. And so I'm thanking the board for doing that. It was wonderful. And it was... We went on a Thursday and listened to it, and we could hear the actors and actresses. It was just... It was a lot better, and we think we can take another step with that, too. So that was great with the cordless and wireless mics. And then finally, we... Two years ago during COVID, we... First of all, we've never had a maintenance barn. We've never had a maintenance true truck. We've had some old trucks, and one was taken from us. I'm going to use... I guess it was stolen. And we found it down by the apartments. And it was an old truck anyway, but it was, at that point in time, time to call it quits on that truck. So we put an order in two years ago that we took from Operations Fund. It was in the Capital Projects Fund all along. But you will see it now because two years later, we're getting that truck. So we're going to be able to keep all of our hammers and screwdrivers in all one place. We don't have a maintenance barn in Speedway, but we're going to have a maintenance truck that we can keep our tools in. And that's going to be much more efficient and effective for our guys getting around. We only have a team of three, so it's not like we have a lot of people out there. But that's going to be very positive. And it's going to be a new truck, but we've been planning on that for years and years. So I just want to give you updates on the new microphones, and you'll see the new maintenance truck and a few things happening over the summer at the junior high.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board about the projects?
Thanks.
Excited to see those safety doors get done.
Yes.
Item number five is to present a preliminary report regarding the 2023 summer school programs.
In your packet is the preliminary plans for 2023 summer school. Very similar to things that we have done in the past. Summer school is kind of a dying thing in some of the schools, and I'm proud to say that we offer that to our students. And I was just doing some figuring. There's about 250 elementary students that were involved in our summer school last year, about 75 junior high students and about somewhere between 80 and 100 high school students that were participated in some type of summer program for. So it is utilized by our students. And the elementary proposal includes... And junior high includes some I-Learn review and preparation and specifically for third graders that didn't pass I-Read 3. We also have available to our secondary students online classes at the high school for credit. Also in the proposal is acceleration opportunities for all levels. These are fun learning type of days for our students, and they fill up pretty quickly. Band classes are offered for elementary students who are going to the junior high school. Remember, that's the first time that our students in Speedway actually have their hands or lips on an instrument. And it's... There's a lot of them that go for summer band at the junior high school. And then we have marching band for students in 9 through 12 at the high school. So... And lastly, if approved this evening, we will be offering free swim lessons like we have in the past for students age 5 and above in our... In Speedway... At Speedway High School through the Parks Department. Any questions about the summer school plans?
The free swim lessons go back to at least 1981. 78.
Further than that.
Further than that. Not saying some people up here are probably involved.
I think they've been around for a long time. Yeah.
A lot of kids have learned to swim in that pool.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Item number six is to approve the funding for the recreation program administered by the Speedway Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is to again reimburse the town of Speedway up to $15,000 in support of summer recreational programs and swim lessons specifically designed to serve the children of our school community. Tammy Smith is the director, and she has been for multiple years, and this program continues to grow. So I full-heartedly ask you to approve this as it really does help many, many of our students, and I hear so many great things about this. And while I'm on this, and I'm going to... Just because I'm thinking of this, too, we're moving our free lunches, which kind of go hand-in-hand with this in our summer programs, from 11:30 to 1:00 for these three weeks. I always feel like we're just kind of in the middle, so we're just going to open up a little longer, 11:30 to 1:00 at Speedway High School to give kids time to get back there. But this recommendation is just approving the parks... Programs.
I'll move that we approve funding 15... Up to $15,000 for a recreation program administered by our Parks and Recreation Department in the summer.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? For those of you who live by one of the parks, it's always nice in the summer to drive by and see all the kids having fun, being safe and being monitored by our folks.
It really is.
All those in favor of approving the funding for the recreation program administered by Speedway Parks and Rec? Please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number seven is to approve the textbook adoption.
The... Now it's called curricular materials adoption because of so many online things, but still the same thing. We in Speedway still use textbooks. And every six years, there's a new textbook that we adopt. Our curricular materials that we adopt. And in your packet, you'll see the timeframe of how we go about this, and that is it starts in the middle of summer. And when I... When people are appointed as chairpeople for the committees to look into the materials. And this year, it's for science. And at the end of the... Of March, they go through a process where they narrow down which one of the textbooks would best meet the needs for the classes they have. They get input from the... From parents, from teachers, from instructional coaches at the elementary level. And in your packet, there is a recommendation for science curricular materials at the K through 6 level, which this year is McGraw-Hill. And it can... It shows you what each one of those textbook costs. Now, that's not what it's taught costing the individual because we divide that over a five-year period of time. And we're allowed to divide that over a five-year period of time. In the seventh... In eighth grade, they are... They chose Savis as their publisher. Savis used to be the old Pearson product, our Pearson Company, Pearson Book Company. The high school's a different animal because there's so many different courses that are offered, and some of those are AP courses. But you'll see on the high school list the list of textbooks that they are requesting to adopt for this coming six years. My recommendation is to approve those materials as presented unless you have questions.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the textbook adoption as presented.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the curricular materials adoption.
I'll second the corrected motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this?
John, I have a question. Do they take the cost of the book divided by five, you say, or six?
They used to take... When you and I did that, you taught me how to do this 1,000 years ago. We used to do it by four. And now they're allowing that to be by five. And you say, well, wait a minute. We do it every six years. The reason why you do it and not by six is so that you can recover... Not everybody pays for the textbooks. It's a way to recover cost for that.
Right.
So yes, we can divide it by five, which helps in the lower the cost of that. And I will tell you that in part of the selection of these, cost was definitely a consideration of what... How to get some of those materials and things in the hands of our students was definitely a consideration by our teachers and our committees that looked at that.
Thank you for the work. That's... This is no easy task when we have a year to do that. So thank you.
Are there any other questions for the group? All those in favor of approving the curricular materials adoption, please raise your hand. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number eight is the 2023-2024 Student Parent Handbook. We do have two visitors in the audience today who would like to address the board regarding this particular item. I invite Mary Haste and Amelia Grant. Each of you will have up to two minutes to address the board.
Great. Good evening. My name is Mary Haste, and I am the parent of a Speedway High School student. First, I want to thank you for the time that you give our Speedway students and community. While my family is not new to Speedway, this year is our first year of being a part of the great Speedway schools. Our oldest child, Grant, is a freshman and has had a wonderful beginning to their career at Speedway. My niece attends Wheeler, and my three younger children will attend Speedway within the next few years. I wanted to take a moment to voice my concern regarding a few proposed changes in the 23-24 Parent-Student Handbook for Speedway Schools. I've had the opportunity to discuss my concerns with Dr. Trebley, as well as a couple of board members, and found that there does not seem to be any knowledge as to why these changes are currently necessary for Speedway schools. Unfortunately, I have not granted access to a copy of the proposed handbook at this time since it has not yet been approved. So I am only using the language that was used at last month's board meeting. The first proposed change I would like to be reconsidered is that in which shorts, dresses, and skirts must cover from waist to knee. Our current handbook states that they must be near the knee. I was told that the only thing that they could think of for using at the knee instead of near the knee is to limit distractions. In this day and age, I am so disappointed that we continue to have conversations regarding what is most likely female-related clothing or lack thereof as being a distraction. Our current dress code calls for near-the-knee seems very adequate in ensuring fellow students or staff are not distracted. The second proposed change I would like to speak to tonight is that of banning nonreligious coverings. I would like for the board to consider naming the exact coverings that will not be permitted as the proposed language would apply to head coverings that are tied to race and ethnicity. And I disagree with that as proposed. If the school finds baseball caps or hoodies to be a problem, I would like them to state that instead of using the term "nonreligious coverings." This past summer, Chicago Public Schools made the decision to not allow school dress codes to be on head coverings tied to race and ethnicity. I would like you to consider doing this as well. My final ask is that additional information regarding topics discussed at board meetings be communicated to the public. Currently, your board agenda and minutes do not provide adequate informative information for residents and parents. I have attended all but one meeting since August when my child started to attend Speedway schools. And I feel like I have no idea what is going on or what is being discussed at each meeting.
I'm going to stop you because that isn't item eight. And so let it... Right? So let us get through item eight. And then I suppose if we want to come back to this topic, that would be in the other business category.
Okay. I thought it tied with the parent handbook and communication with families.
I mean, you can say that you didn't have the information about the parent handbook, but not in general how agenda items are.
Okay. So can I finish?
No. You can come back when we're... When we're... When there's an opportunity to talk about other business.
Okay. It includes the parent handbook.
Okay. So just talk to us about the parent handbook on this one.
Okay. So I propose that you link the Parent-Student Handbook into your agenda and minutes as is allowed to the... As... To the degree in which it is allowed by law. If you would like me to point you in the direction of your agenda or minutes, I would be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two minutes.
My name is Amelia Grant, and I am Mary's sister. And I have a daughter who attends Wheeler Elementary. I also have a toddler who will be attending Wheeler Elementary in a few years. I have to say, it is very hard to speak to a specific item number when parents are not given the opportunity to speak otherwise. But let me continue on agenda number eight. Nonreligious head coverings. It is very unbelievable that a board that does not reflect the community is going to make opinions on things that do not concern you. And so I agree with Mary in that you should make a policy that this would not be related to ethnic or racial head coverings. Additionally, I will say, my sister has always been the more eloquent one, and I am the more blunt one. If a child is so distracted by my child's body, that sounds like a them problem, bordering on sexual harassment. If a teacher or administration is so distracted by my child's body, that sounds like a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to hear from the updates regarding the proposed Student Parent Handbook for 2023-2024.
At the last meeting, the 2023 Student Parent Handbook was presented for the board's review. Suggestions were given, and corrections and additions have been made. In your packet is a listing of the changes that will occur in the 23-24 addition. I will read through those for you. And one of those specifically there on page five, there's an update in the belief statements. Students assuming responsibility for their learning. It was a correction made by the board that makes it more congruent to what else is in there on the belief statements. On page five, they updated the belief statements for parents and students to be citizens to sustain democracy. They updated calendar on page six. On page 19, where it talks about dress, the... The recommendation was to strike the word "headbands" and add "nonreligious coverings" and "not permitted to wear." Add "shorts, skirts, and dresses must cover from the waist to near the knees," is what is in the handbook. Change "pants must be worn in a dignified manner" to "pants must be worn at the waistline." The rest of the changes in the handbook were... The rest of the changes in the handbook were... Haven't been in question, and they were things that we talked about at the last meeting. My recommendation would be to... My recommendation then would be to approve those changes, knowing that there are changes that are going to be required by interpretation of New Indiana Code, possibly.
With the board's pleasure.
I'm going to be a little... Out of our usual order. Because... I... While I don't... I guess I... My question would be if I'm going to seek a little information on a point, whether... We want to move forward with that caveat or whether we come back overall. And I don't know what the timing of the handbook is. So let me say this otherwise. I'm fine making a motion that has a caveat in it. If we have time, then if we don't, you know, if we need to do that, I would also be fine saying, here's a general improvement, bring this piece back. And I think before I know which of those is better, I need to know what we're talking.
So timeline. So the timeline is if we get it approved at the May board meeting, if within that next week we get that off to the printer, we'll have it back. What we try to have that back for is registration. So registration generally happens right after, you know, the Fourth of July week. So I think that's the answer to your question. I think that's possible.
Okay.
And I'd rather have it right, even if it's a little bit later.
Okay. Then here's my motion. I move that we approve the text of the handbook as presented to us with the hold on hearing language that would include... Hearing with having my concern about of the protected liberty interest, religion being the only one that is specifically designated. And so if it is possible to deal with a ethnic slash racial... My concern there is the ability to determine that and what that... How that works. But I think that's something that it makes sense for us to look at. I have zero problem with the shorts thing. I think that our administration is able to say, this is the way it is easiest for us. You know, "near" is not... Touching is not. So this is the way it is easiest for us to police this. So I'm personally not concerned about that piece. I am... I do think we should look at the other. That's my motion.
Can I try to restate it?
You can.
So I would second a motion to approve the handbook changes as presented to us with the exception of the section concerning head coverings and the appropriate dress. That section I would like to address at the May board meeting. Is that a fair understanding of what you were after?
I mean, that's broader. So you're adding that you do want to address the...
Well, we have to approve it one way or another.
Well, I'm saying I approve the "shorts, skirts, and dresses must cover the waist to knees now." And I want the one sentence addressed. And so are you... Yes. And so are you broadening it to both or...
I said head coverings and the appropriate dress section.
Gotcha. Okay. I thought you meant by that. I thought you meant by that, the second sentence as well. Yes. That is what I'm saying.
So I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this, seeing it's a different initial motion?
When we enforce... When administrators enforce "shorts, skirts, and dresses near the knees," does that apply to students who identify as both male and female?
Yes.
This... If I could speak on that, I... The "near the knee" hasn't changed. That was in there before, and it's in there now. That phrase is still there. That's the way it's described in the previous handbook, the handbook that I... That we have. What's changed is that we changed from... It used to be, "wear pants in a dignified manner." And they thought that wasn't descriptive enough. It could be dignified for you and not dignified for, you know, da-da-da. So "near the waist" was the... At the waistline is where they wanted the pants to be. And then down near the knee. As a father of a six-foot-tall girl, there was never shorts we could buy that went to the knee. And, you know, she got that from her father. So if we could get them close to the knee, that was good. They weren't inappropriate. They just weren't... You know, they didn't touch the knee. That would be knickers for most people. So that's... It's "near the knee" gives them some leeway. I can tell you, as an administrator for 30-plus years, maybe the hardest thing you have to do is dress code because there is no... There's not anything you can write in a book that says this or this unless you go to uniforms. So... And there is a line in there that the final say about what is appropriate and not appropriate would lie in the hands of the administration. So...
And while it's been some years, we have considered uniforms at various times.
Or at least two of us on the board.
Yes, that's true.
Well, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion presented, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number nine is...
Let me say, thank you. We welcome and appreciate feedback very much.
Can I say something? You guys said two things in your resolution. You said in the beginning, "it's at the knee," and then you said "near the knee." So which one is it that you guys decided on?
It's "near the knee."
It's been "near the knee." And on our conversation today at 2:30 or whenever we talked, right before the meeting...
You didn't talk to me.
I'm talking to Mary.
Well, the beginning of the conversation...
Well, it's always been "near the knee," and that's where that we need to make... That needs to be clarified. Since I've been a principal since 2014 here, it's always been "near the knee." So I'm glad we got that because I think we're on the same page on that. What's that? If I... That's what it was and then what it is.
So it was misspoken at the last meeting and at the beginning of this meeting.
No, it was read off of, I mean, what...
I... When I wrote out my comments, I listened to Dr. Disney had said at the March meeting, and I wrote it out for Baidam. So that was my concern. So if there's no change "near the knee," I can buy my kid shorts and not have to make it themselves. If that is the actual policy.
So if I misspoke...
Policy is "near the knee."
Yeah, if I misspoke... If I misspoke, I apologize because what it says in here... This is the handbook that's currently on our website, by the way, Student Parent Handbook. Page 19, it says, "Cut off..." "Shorts, skirts, and dresses must be near the knees." And that's what we're saying. It must be near the knees, but the pants must be worn at the waist to near the knees.
So there's no change to the proposed length of shorts.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Back to item number nine, which is the acknowledgment of grants received. We're thankful for $210,044.93. Item number 10 is the personnel report.
Give me just a second.
It's been a busy night for Mr. Disney.
It has. Personnel report has several items on it this month. Resignations listed in your packet are Samantha Allen as a homeschool advisor at Newby Elementary School, Kaye Thomas, who is a cafeteria worker at the junior high Fisher Building, Margaret Maggie Hofmeister, who's a cafeteria worker. She's at Speedway High School. Taylor Jones is the assistant cheerleading coach, and Alex Keese, who's a seventh-grade girls' basketball coach. Recommendations for employment. Laine Casey is an elementary teacher for next fall. Carly Smith is an elementary teacher for next fall. When I say next fall, August 1st is will be their start date. Amy Willhammer is an elementary teacher. Helen Kate Cunningham is a science teacher at Speedway High School. Scott Raymond is school psychologist. Sean Benetti is assistant to the treasurer. The next two is kind of confusing. Amanda Totten worked as a three-hour position in the cafeteria from April 4th to April 7th. And we have moved her to a four-hour position starting on April 10th. That's why she's listed twice. Shirley Boswell is a four-hour position cafeteria worker at the junior high school. Taylor Jones is a social-emotional mentor. Mindy Lewis-Hitch is an assistant track coach at Speedway High School. And Joe Rush is assistant football coach at Speedway High School, starting in August. One volunteer coach is listed, and that's Keith Lauder. And he will help with the tennis program. My recommendation would be to approve the personnel report as presented.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Thank you.
I will second that. And I will ask about Mr. Jeremy Parker.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Jeremy Parker was also...
Yes, thank you for doing that.
Too many papers up here. Sorry about that. Jeremy Parker was a last-minute recommendation.
Good catch.
Jeremy Parker works as a paraprofessional workforce at the high school, and he's being recommended as an assistant track coach at Speedway High School. Thank you.
Let me amend my motion to... Approve now the personnel report as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
And I'll recuse myself.
Thank you. Dr. Smith is recused. All those in favor of approving the personnel report as presented, please raise your hand. Opposed? Thank you. Item number 11 is recognition of visitors and other business. Thank you all for being here.
Do you have more to address on whatever I shut you down on? I didn't shut you down. I shut your sister down. So you...
Oh, I'm sorry. So this isn't a time where people can share information? Okay.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
I will say, I wonder if this is why people don't come to school board meetings.
Yes.
My final ask is that the additional information regarding topics discussed at school board meetings be communicated to the public. Currently, your board agenda and minutes do not provide adequate informative information for residents and parents. I have attended all but one meeting since August and still feel like I have no idea what is going on and what is being discussed at each meeting. And I'm in education for a living. I would like the board to consider linking documents such as the proposed Parent-Student Handbook, as well as other information that would allow residents to understand what is being discussed to the degree in which it is allowed by law. I would be happy to point you in the direction of the agendas and minutes that are currently shared via your website if that would be helpful, as well as sharing examples of what would be most helpful for me as a parent that is invested in our community, that wants to see representation on your board, on the town council. Because I truly believe that parents are partners. And it would be ideal if you don't want other items. I've never spoken at a school board meeting before. I... Other business? I've never seen anyone speak at a school board meeting. I didn't realize that you... That was even available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business, Dr. Tribbley?
Kindergarten roundup. Yes. And other business part of this is that next Tuesday is kindergarten roundup in Speedway. That will be August 18th. It is 5:30 to 6:30 at each elementary building. Really important that... What did I say?
April.
April. What did I say?
August.
August. Sorry about that. April 18th, next Tuesday. And 5:30, 6:30, each one of the elementary buildings. Really important that parents that have students that are going to be five after August 1st or before August 1st of this school year, bring their students and get registered so we have no... We have a better idea what to prepare for. We have 191 kindergartners, and we didn't know that going in. So the better... More we have at these roundups, the better off we are. So here's a plea to come register your kindergartners next Tuesday.
Thank you. Any other items?
That is all.
Item number 12 is for us to adjourn and approve claims. So thank you all very much.
So when do parents get to talk then?